I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 11, 2025. First order on the agenda will be invocation by Pastor Ophy Wright, a minister at First Baptist Church, 401 Hubbard Street, Reesville, North Carolina. Pastor Wright, as you pray, would you please pray for the Brown family, Mayor Protim Brown lost his mother? And we also have a council member who's recovering from surgery and one who's on the road back home from a business trip, so at those places.
Good Lord, Donald Elgore, Mayor Protim, and council members. It is good to be here this evening. Let us pray. Father, we bring you into this orange-shaped room this evening. We ask, oh God, that you bestow your blessings upon those council members who have had surgery in, those who are recovering from an illness, and for the one who has a void in his heart this evening, for the loss of a mother, one who can never be replaced. We praise you, God, for the people who are in this room tonight to oversee all that is to take place according to the agenda, in a matter of fifteen to sixteen items on this agenda. We ask, oh God, that you guide them as they take care of the business for the city of Reesville. We praise you, God, for allowing them to beautify the city, make decisions that sometimes may not be favorable to everyone who sits and listens in this room. But we know, oh God, you keep them in the palm of your hand, and we ask, oh God, that you do that very same thing tonight, that you will guide them as they make decisions for the city of Reesville, that you will allow them to agree on more things than they will disagree. We ask your blessings upon the city manager as she manages the money. We praise you, oh God, for the attorney, for the job and the role that he plays. And we ask, oh God, that you will continue to keep your loving arms around us as we depart from this place at the end of this meeting. Protect us as you take us to our respective homes. Once again, we magnify you. We praise you and we lift you up because it's in your name we pray. Amen. Amen.
We all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is a recognition of February as Black History Month. Just gonna do that from here. My proclamation reads, whereas February has been designated as Black History Month, and will be observed in our community with a series of special presentations and exhibits, with the observation afforded special opportunity for local residents to become more knowledgeable of our black heritage, and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas such knowledge can also serve to strengthen the insight of all of our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate barriers of equality for minority groups, and the continual struggle against racial discrimination and poverty. Now therefore, I, Donald Elgore, Mayor of the city of Reesville, on behalf of the Regional City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February to be Black History Month in Reesville, and further urge all stoop, all love, I'm thinking it's cool, all citizens to join together in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people, this the eleventh day, February 2025. Next item on the agenda is a recognition of Captain Brian Oakley, a thirty-year retiree of the Reesville Police Department. I glanced out in the audience as I sat down and I didn't see him. Yeah, Oakley, but I see you, you see him. Captain looks too young to be retired. Whereas Captain Brian Oakley began his career in law enforcement with the Regional Police Department as a patrol officer on September 21, 1998, officially retired from the department on November 1, 2025, thirty years in the state retirement system. Whereas Captain Oakley worked his way up the RPD, becoming a sergeant in October of 2004, a lieutenant in October of 2007, so about the month of October. Being promoted to captain in February of 2015, whereas he effectively supervised criminal investigation unit and was a driving force in restructuring the special investigations unit, where he exhibited an enthusiastic approach and too diligently seeking resolutions to a variety of issues that provided valuable, that proved to be invaluable to the department. Whereas Captain Oakley also displayed an exemplary attitude and work ethic, excellent logic and perception and dependability, not only in dealing with the department and with the community, but also strong team skills in cooperating with other law enforcement and agents. Whereas Captain Oakley, a strong, whereas Captain Oakley's strong leadership skills and devotion to law enforcement and the regional community reflected the core values, core values of the Regional Police Department and its motto, making a difference. Now therefore, I, Donald Elgore, on behalf of the Regional City Council, take great pleasure in recognizing and honoring Captain Brian Oakley. On the occasion of his retirement from the Regional Police Department, thank him for his many years of service to the city of Reesville and its citizens, all of whom benefited because he worked to keep them safe. Let's give him another big round of applause. It is the eleventh day of February. We also got some, I don't know what it is in this box here, but it's some special. How was that for you, words?
Highly recommend retiring. I had a great career. I went a whole lot longer, pulled out higher through the ranks than I ever expected I would, but I worked with some great people. Chief Gibson was great work for, I worked for, was great work for. The citizens of Reesville were great to work with, and I was glad that he partied.
I must say myself, in my time on City Council and even prior to you. Thank you, man. I appreciate it more than anything. Anyone else who'd like to say a few words about it?
I'll have to chime in on this one. As a retiree from Regional PD myself, Brian and I worked together a lot, had a lot of fun. You have to make it fun in that career because everything we see and run across is not fun. But we got a lot of things accomplished during those years and worked well together, and I couldn't ask anybody else, you know, better to work with in those times in the tech division as well. So congratulations, I know you enjoy it. You probably gonna have to find something else to do because if you're gonna have a honey-do list from your wife over there, I'm sure, so you better find something else to do.
I get played with this.
Oh, yeah. Congratulations.
I'd just say congratulations to you, Captain Oakley.
Captain, it's been a privilege, and all good things are in October with October birthdays. Congratulations.
Josh Beck. He's supposed to try to supply you with fresh drinking water every day. Whereas providing safe drinking water to our community is an integral part of our everyday lives, and the support of understanding and enforced citizens is vital to the efficient operation of the city's water supply operations. Whereas the public health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on the availability of safe drinking water, and the ability to supply properly treated water and effectively operated water system facility in full compliance with all applicable rules and regulations is vital, is finally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the city's highly qualified dedicated water supply professionals. Now therefore, I, Donald Elgore, Mayor of the city of Reesville, on behalf of Regional City Council, do hereby recognize the outstanding operation and performance of the city's water treatment plant, or cheated in calendar year 2024, one hundred percent operational compliance. That deserves a big round of applause. And I call upon all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in the visions of safe drinking water to our community and to recognize the contributions which water supply officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have here unto sit my hand on the cause, the seal of the city of Reesville, North Carolina, to affix this eleventh day of February 2025, Donald Elgore will be of the city of Reesville. Josh.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I just wanna say a quick few words, I know we got quite an agenda, but it's just, I'd say to, you know, these guys are behind the scenes, they're behind the gate, you never see them, and I don't think we give them enough credit for what they do. None of us, you know, even anticipate when we turn the faucet on at home that there's not gonna be clean flush water coming out of that. I mean, these guys are at the plant day and night, twenty-four seven, whether you're sitting at home, eating dinner on Thanksgiving or opening presents Christmas morning, somebody's at these plants and operating that, and they certainly deserve a ton of credit for that.
Josh, would you introduce?
Sure.
Some heroes?
Sure. Yeah, we have, so Blake is our ORC and water treatment plant superintendent, he's been here, oh gosh, put myself on this, two and a half years roughly. So Boyd has held it down for something like fifteen years now, seven, seems like for it. Then we have a couple of you guys, you got Jason, Krista, Cheryl, which I only see like two times a year, and Chris, which has actually recently obtained his certification. He was, he was our newest recruit in trainees, so we're constantly having trainees come into our plant, we teach everything on the job, get their state certifications, and then they can become backup operators for, heaven forbid, Cheryl acts and wants a day off every now and then. But yeah, these, and this is just a few of them, certainly not all of them. Obviously, there's somebody at the plant right now, running it and ensuring that drinking water is safe and at their horse.
Okay, give a high five for everybody before we go back. He's off by nine asleep, he's birthday. We have three items, stay. If not, we get a motion. We have a motion, we have a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item is a public hearing, consideration of ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Reesville by voluntary annexation, or annexing approximately one hundred and twenty acres, parcel number 142535Z1, off of Gibbs Lake Road, A 2025-01. Enclosure one, Jason Harden, planning and community director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening, I am claiming your adjutant's package as a fully executed request by the owners of Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 142535Z1, to show on the tax record as William F. McLeod trustee and Dorothy S. Richardson trustee to voluntarily annex one hundred twenty point seven six nine acres off Gibbs Lake Road. This is a contiguous annexation as the city limit line already runs through a portion of the property, staff finding petition valid and recognize the approval of the ordinance to extend the corporate limits after the year of our public hearing. I'll be glad to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions, Jason? Thank you, Jason. We'll start the public hearing at 6:20. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:21. We have an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the city of Reesville that has to be voted on. We have a motion. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? The next item is also a public hearing, consideration of an application to rezone the property located at Gibbs Lake Road, Rockingham County Parcel Number 142535Z1, to assign an initial city of Reesville zoning designation of conditional zoning residential twelve, CZR twelve, Legacy Investment and Development LLC. Submitted the application and the property owners are the Richardson Family Trust, William F. McLeod, and Dorothy Summers Richardson trustees, docket number Z 2025-01, enclosure two, Jason Harden.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council and Manager. Legacy Investment and Development LLC is petitioning with root consent of the current owner, an initial city of Reesville zoning designation of conditional zoning R twelve, conditional zoning residential twelve, assigned to the property located off of Gibbs Lake Road, Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 142535Z1. The owner of the property is listed as Richardson Family Trust, William F. McLeod, and Dorothy Summers Richardson trustees. The owner has petitioned to voluntarily annex the parcel as well, which council just approved, so you just okayed that. So it is in the city. Now we're assigning an initial zoning designation to the portion of the property that's not in the city. The owner and the applicant may submit for these both consecutively to be considered in the same hearing. The parcel encompasses a total combined area of one hundred and thirty-seven point two three eight acres. There was some confusion that someone noted on the tax record of the acreage being seventeen deeded acres. That's the portion of the property that's in the city limit. So that, for some reason, the tax department does that on the tax map, so if you look on the tax record, it'll say seventeen deeded acres, that's just a portion within the city limit. We reached directly out to the register of deeds office, and that's what they told us. So the land includes a mix of city highway business zoning and residential agricultural twenty zoning, along with Rockingham County residential agricultural zoning, so three different zoning designations. The condition of the property is undeveloped. Existing water and sewer service are available, city water and sewer mains are located in the right of way of Freeway Drive, and another sewer main crosses the southwestern corner of the parcel. Note the capacity to support this development is contingent upon upgrades to the Forest Drive pump station that serves the area. Funds have been allocated for design but not for construction at present time. There are several waterways flowing across the property from the same stream source as the property is located in the Jordan Lake watershed, any development must include a fifty-foot riparian buffer from each stream bank. That's to assist with protecting water quality, it's a watershed requirement for all the land within the Jordan Lake watershed. The floodplain insurance rate, the flood insurance rate map at the firm from FEMA does not show any floodplains on the site even though there are streams, so no floodplain, no flood zone is on the property. A conditional zoning request amends, the zoning map with site-specific conditions that are incorporated into the amendment. This allows the owner and the developer to place voluntary conditions on the land with the intent of restricting allowable uses within the new zoning district or to ask for deviations from certain standards. The owner and the applicant get to choose which of the allowable uses they seek for the district. In this case, it's R twelve, so CZR twelve is the parallel zoning district. The owner and the applicant have requested to limit allowable uses to single-family detached dwellings. In addition, the applicant has provided the required concept master plan, which you can see on this presentation, and submit on that. And some issues with that, but it's in there. So that's the conceptual master plan that the applicant provided. Per Article five, section one of the reasonable zoning ordinance, any major change that alters the density of the development, well, it actually increases if it increases density, decreases use of compatible design features, decreases pedestrian features, or changes the uses approved for the property, it must again come before the planning board and city council, so that's what we call a major change, that's where they have to come back before council and the planning board to make any changes to the conceptual plan, to the conditional zoning. Minor changes which do not rise to the level of a major change may be approved administratively by the planning director. Approval of the concept plan does not issue approval for construction, this is important to note. The preliminary plat review must still be completed by the technical review committee along with the applicable construction drawings for infrastructure. So this is just for the zoning, this is not for construction approval. The proposed concept master plan includes construction of two hundred and seventy-four single-family detached dwellings on the parcel which is located within the Troublesome Creek watershed. Just a reminder on what a watershed is, a watershed is a geographic area of land where runoff flows downhill to a single water source. There are two watersheds found in the city of Reesville, and it's extraterritorial jurisdiction. These are the Troublesome Creek watershed and the Jordan Lake watershed. Troublesome Creek recharge charges surface waters at the city of Reesville's lake, Lake Reesville, that serves as our drinking source, of course, which, so this watershed is around Lake Reesville, everything that flows downhill into our lake, so that's why we have certain restrictions on development. Per Article fourteen, water supply watershed development within the Troublesome Creek watershed occurs a twenty-four percent built-upon-area limit, with the exception of single-family detached dwellings, which are exempted from the built-upon-area limit but can be built to no greater density than two units per acre, and this development lands right on that, so for the acreage, it lands right at two seventy-four, so they're right at that limit. The lot area is one hundred and thirty-seven point two three nine acres times two, it's two seventy-four point four seven seven, so right on it. A community clubhouse is also planned as part of the development, this is subject to the built-upon-area limit, so it has to be under that twenty-four percent, but they have a lot to spare because it's a very large lot, so it's just the single-family homes that are, that are two units an acre, so. There is a cluster development provision that's allowed by Wright, which removes the minimum lot size in Article fourteen. This is intended to reduce the impact and allow clustering of the development to lessen the impact on the natural area. This doesn't require council approval, this can be done by Wright. However, the water supply watershed regulations don't allow deviation from the setbacks, so that's why they have requested the conditional zoning. The applicants request- The applicant's requesting a side yard setback in the conceptual master plan of five feet for interior lots and 10 feet for corner lots. That's a five-foot reduction for interior lots and a 15-foot reduction for corner lots. That's from the stock R12 standards, but this becomes a conditional district of its own kind of, that's what you're creating is that's of its own district. Staff finds the reduction in side yard setbacks reasonable as a means to reduce impact on the natural area because you're compacting things in just a little bit further. So we find that that reduction is reasonable. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on December the 19th, 2024, at the Reevesville Recreation Center to discuss their proposed project with the adjacent property owners. So they have worked with the community to see what their concerns are and to work with them. The proposed conditional rezoning aligns with goal number three, the Reevesville land development plan to expand housing. This includes expanding the housing stock and providing a variety of housing options that are attractive, affordable for people of all income levels. The property is located in growth management area three, suburban, which surrounds the city center. It's primarily encompassing the areas south, southwest, north, northwest, and west of the city. GMA3 is predominantly characterized by residential and commercial development with ample vacant land available for development. According to the land development plan, GMA3 prioritizes the expansion of residential development and provides an existing transportation network capable of accommodating growth. Additionally, GMA3 residential development is in close proximity to commercial office and industrial employment as well as retail services. Staff finds the proposed conditional rezoning to be consistent with the reasonable land development plan, reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented in our staff report of the planning. Staff recommend the proposed conditional rezoning be approved. The planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed conditional rezoning be approved. I'll be happy to answer your questions if you have any.
If you want to have any questions. Thank you, Jason. Public hearing starts at 6:32. Is there one who'd like to speak for?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Blaine Jackson. I am with Legacy Investment Development, and it is, you know, with great pleasure that we bring this project to the city of Reevesville and hopefully to include some new growth to the city. I also would like to just remind you all that the property, which we feel like was, it's tough to navigate being in the Troublesome Creek watershed, you know, with the requirements of two units per acre, but I feel like we did a very good job of making sure we maintain a lot of open space, you know, for those natural areas. So if there's any other questions as well, I'm here as well. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:33. Council, we have a parrot statement or motion for this particular item. We also have to vote on a resolution adopting the statement of the consistency of the reasonableness regarding the amendment. We got a motion first for the, about use of the parrot motion.
Motion.
Right, you'll need to read that.
I make a motion that the proposed zoning be approved for the specified faults to the requested zoning district based upon the consistency of reasonableness in determination statements that are included in the council agenda packets submitted during the rezoning presentation, as may be amended, incorporated into the motion hereby adopted to be included in the amendments.
Got a motion? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have to vote on the resolution adopting the statement of consistency. We have a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Say.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item is a code enforcement item. Consideration of an ordinance to repair 105 Gilmer Street, enclosure three, Jason Hardy.
Thank you again, Mayor and Councilman Manager. Sleepy days have expired on January 13th, 2025, and filed a code enforcement order to repair the building at 105 Gilmer Street. As the structure has not been repaired for the issued administrative order, the matter comes before council to take corrective action. Therefore, I am requesting authorization to initiate repair of the structure's facade. As you're aware, the city has received numerous complaints regarding the condition of the structure's facade. Inspection of the dwelling revealed a violation of the city's non-residential maintenance code and warranted repair for the city's building code administrator requiring initiation of an administrative hearing. A title search was performed by the city attorney, which found the property owner to be Washington Street Holdings LLC, along with multiple lien holders on the property. Staff set an administrative hearing for November the 13th, 2024. The complaint and notice of hearing was mailed to the property owner via certified mail and published in the Rockingham Now, and it was also posted on the structure itself. The property owner attended the hearing. However, no material evidence was presented at the hearing into the record other than the report that was submitted by the building code administrator. Subsequently, a non-residential code enforcement order to repair the structure was mailed via certified mail to the property owner, published in the Rockingham Now, and posted on the dwelling. As previously stated, the owner was given 60 days to repair the structure, which expired on January 13th, 2025. The order required repair of the structure's facade. The original inspection findings, Exhibit A and pictures are enclosed in your agenda packets. Additionally, the ordinance authorizing staff to repair the structure is enclosed for council consideration. But the property owner has been mailed a courtesy notice at the city council meeting, and I am requesting council approval of this item, and I'll be glad to answer your questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Not so much as a question. I don't know if this is the time for discussion on it, but I have some serious issues with the city making the repairs and using tax dollars to repair a building that someone else owns that failed to repair it themselves. Going into the dollar amount from myself riding by and putting eyes on this building and the condition, and this thing's been in this shape for over a year and a half, and it's been subject to all the elements. And if we take on something to that extent, you're talking, I'm thinking, you'd have to get an engineer to go in there and see if it's sound to even fix the facade. Because we're talking about the whole front of the building came off. And I'm just having some issues with this, where we're talking about going into us fixing this man's building, where he failed to do over a year and a half. I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. I just, I can't get past that we have a policy, or whether it's a policy or ordinance, that we would be involved. Plus, as you read here on the first page, that there's already two liens on this property. So if we go and repair this, which could be in excess of $100,000, then there's going to be another lien tacked on to it, and then that's how the city's going to get the money back once the building's sold. I just have reservations about it myself as to proceed for us to put a dime in that place. I'm all about preserving buildings, saving buildings. I want to keep all these old buildings in the best we can, but when you're talking dollar figures and using tax dollars to fix somebody else's property who honestly doesn't care about it, I just, I don't know. I got reservations about that.
May I respond? Yes. So that is the general statute. So this is under our non-residential maintenance code, which the general statute does cover. I sent this to our city attorney and our city manager, and basically that outline of the process that you have to follow for this enforcement. So in that process, it is on the city to take action if we do cite a violation. So it'd be the same if it was demolition. So if the codes inspector found that the building warranted being demolished, it would be the same thing. We would hire the contractor, demolish it, put the lien on it. So either way, the city would be taking action. That's just...
Yeah, I understand that, but you're saying, are you saying the general statute is forcing us to have to fix the man's building?
That was the, when the building inspector did the inspection, they determined that the only violation was the front facade wall. They suggested a repair order, and they issued a repair order requiring that it be repaired. Therefore, it's come to the city now to take that action because that was the order that was issued, was that the facade wall be repaired.
I've got a couple of questions. So one, like Councilman Coe said, this building has been exposed to the elements for a year and a half now. So at this point in time, you've got untreated lumber that's exposed to the elements that are going to begin to break down, rot, decay, and all that kind of stuff. So it could, it's most likely going to be more involved and then just build it a facade at this point in time. I'm definitely for, for lack of better terms, cracking the whip and fixing this, but I've got a couple of questions. I guess this may refer back to the city attorney. Two, if we, can we now reevaluate this, given the length of time that this has been sitting there, exposed? Number one. Number two, I know we filed a tax lien on the property, but are there other steps in place to, so that we file this lien, but can we continue to push this through the courts to where we could actually take ownership and then sell the building or force a sale of it to recoup that funding as well?
I'll answer that question first. If there are collateral liens, I understand there are.
Yeah.
They're going to take precedence.
So would our tax lien not supersede?
I'm not sure what the liens are. The last time that I checked the title of this was months ago. So to answer your question definitively, I have to go back to see the nature of those liens. If there, if it's a tax lien, it could jump ahead of other liens. If there's a security interest in the property...
Yeah.
Then, you know, the property's put up as collateral under due process or whatever. What's that difference?
So if there's a security liens on this piece of property prior to us taking, involving, do we not have some type of, I guess, permission or allowance to seek the bank holder, so to say, if it is a bank, and, you know, to see if they would be interested in making this repair? And then my other thing would be, is it would be cheaper to demo that building down than it would be to repair that building. So I don't know what we got to do, but I would like to see, I would like to see an evaluation of the structural integrity of the building, the floors and everything, because it's two stories since it's been open, before we invest any taxpayer dollars in that. Two, I want to see what accountability, if that's the case, if we're going to repair, see whatever it takes to find out what the bank's involvement has if there's that type of lien on the building as well.
If there's a bank involved, then part of the terms and conditions of the due process is the property owner to keep the property and this able to repair.
Correct.
Except where they were, so they, their default, that the trust, if there's a big trust, due to the nature of the property, the value of collateral is mine.
Correct.
And the bank foreposts, if there's a bank, even in a payment's way, even if they're keeping the tax insurance, integrity of the property that is devalued is a fault. So if the question maker foreposts, the bank could, right?
Then the bank would sell it at foreclosure, you know, go through foreclosure, and it'd be up for sale, maybe somebody buy, fix it properly. Or we could go back in, reevaluate this property and what the conditions of it is now after it's been set and exposed to the elements, because I can speak from personal experience as a builder, that this untreated wood and the conditions and the rain and the water and everything else blowing in there would certainly change the dynamics of the conditions. So I would like to see us, whatever the process would be to do, whatever, to go back in and reevaluate the conditions of this building before we make a decision to spend money.
To answer that earlier question that you asked, in the past, the city's gone back to reconsider certain, you know, various things. I don't know, you know, I see the tip of the iceberg as far as what Jason's been talking about, as far as what he's doing in my, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's been times when the base has been reconsidered. As far as the, I don't know what you mean next, when you mentioned it, but it makes me about the demo, that's not, I mean, I...
He might have stated about what the ruling was and the recommendations at that time. That was the recommendations at the time, you know, then. So the building's in a different condition now, you know?
So Mayor and Council, if I may, one of the things, maybe us as staff, we could maybe get a consensus tonight. The biggest thing, I know that the staff has conducted the hearing, the property owner has, went past the time limit, and I know the property owner has been reaching out, wanting staff to extend that, and we've been following statute in our ordinance and saying, you know, it is now going to be up to council. Would there at least be a consensus tonight that council is not interested in giving, staff doesn't have the authority to give extensions? Would there be a consensus tonight to not allow any more extensions from the property owner, so they're aware of that, and allow staff to work with our city attorney to investigate and evaluate the integrity of the building further? That's our biggest thing that we need tonight, is our hands are tied at the staff level in that we can no longer, I know when Jason's been getting communication, at least today that I saw, we have to tell the property owner, this is out of our hands. We can't grant any more extensions. Is that a fair...
That's correct.
...not supposed to?
So for me, I would say yes, no more extensions. What I would like to see is what's the best use of repairing the building where it's demolition or what that, whatever it may be versus spending $100,000 on putting a facade on the front of that building. No more extensions would be my say, but let's look at where we're at, given the timeframe that this building's been set, and then let's make a decision. Do we hit him with another letter or, you know, evaluation of the building where there's rotted wood and floors, and they say, okay, well, the floors are now rotted inside on the first, second level, this has got to be cut out and repaired. Then we'd probably tear that building down for $30,000, save the taxpayer $70,000, put a tax lien on that particular piece of property right there, and somebody make parking out of it. I agree with no extensions.
That at least gives us as staff a consensus to be able to relay that to the property owner, and it gives us time to evaluate everything that we've heard tonight and allow us to work with our city attorney to see what would be the best option, and we can bring that at least forward back to your Mark City Council. Our biggest thing was tonight was following our current ordinance because that the property owner is allowed due process to bring it to this point, and we just wanted to be transparent of where we are in the process.
And also, Bill could look in terms of lien holder rights and stuff.
Especially since now there's two liens.
We'd be a third lien.
Yes, sir.
So let's see where we fare within that, and then if we're at the bottom of the totem pole, we have to take action. We take the lesser cost action if we're able to do. do that. You think Councilwoman DeJournette consent too?
Councilwoman DeJournet, how do you feel about this situation? Must be on mute.
I, no extension, but I have a question. Has anybody, do we know what the estimate of repairs could be, and if there's an injury possessed when somebody's walking past, and a piece falls off and hurts someone, is that responsibility the city, or do we go back to the owner?
Initially, it's gonna be the property owner. The property owner is gonna be, you know, somebody falls and gets hurt, injured, whoever that is, probably gonna go to a lawyer. The lawyer's gonna do a shotgun purchase of everybody, anything, to get a hold of, probably to deep pot. So, you know, it could be that injured party, assumes the owner, assumes the city, assumes the man walking down the street, they can't, probably get some type of liability, and probably deep pot, including insurance. But primarily, it's the property.
Okay.
Mr. Harden, did you...
So, I still stick with no extension.
We would ask them, if council does wish to continue this, if you would make a motion to table it.
Make a motion to table it.
Got a motion and a second to table, and I think it's a good idea to have a better understanding of where we stand with this situation, before we spend taxpayer dollars.
And council's comfortable, at least authorizing us to move forward, trying to get some better information on price estimates.
Yes.
When, actually, when's the last time somebody's been in there to inspect it?
It was in November, when the building...
November issue?
Yes, it was in 2024, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, just a few months ago.
You okay with that, Bobber?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Table to March.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of lead service line grant loan and related local government commission application, including a resolution by a governing body of applicant. In closure, for Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager of Administration, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, several months ago, a year ago, city council actually authorized staff to contract with a firm to begin working on the federally mandated water lead line inventory. So, at that time, staff stated that they would be looking for funding to help pay for this mandate, and fortunately, the state has provided some funding pools, and the first one up here is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help us to start to, the work that's actually already been pretty much completed, or in the process of being completed, to get an inventory of potential homes that have lead lines on the homeowner's side of the service. So, is actually the letter from the state that's, it's considered a loan, but it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and ninety thousand is forgivable. So, ninety thousand of the loan is really a grant, because it will not have to be paid back. The sixty thousand does have to be paid back, it's zero percent interest, so it will make equal payments over. The letter didn't have a term, but it's usually twenty years for this kind of arrangement. So, what we're asking to, tonight, is to do, consider adopting a resolution that will basically accept that a hundred and fifty thousand dollar award, ninety thousand forgivable, sixty thousand paid back at zero interest. Once we have the resolution approved, if you choose to do that tonight, this all has to go to the local government commission, because it is considered debt, it is considered a loan, and they have to approve it in March. For these, lead service line grant loans, they've been doing them all, this one, for everybody that's on the list, so it's really kind of a rubber stamp that the local government commission approves it, but they are required to approve all debt. So, if you choose to adopt the resolution, then there's also a budget ordinance amendment, which just picks up the hundred and fifty thousand as loan proceeds, and then recognizes the hundred and fifty thousand will be spent as contracted services for that project.
Any questions, Chris? We've got two items to load on. We've got a resolution for this project, and we've got a budget ordinance. Let's get a motion for the resolution first.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Barbara? Did you vote for the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
A train just went by, couldn't hear you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we're looking at budget ordinance amendment number nine, for the same project. Do we have a motion? Got a motion? And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
And I will point out, we'll be coming to you maybe next month, we've got the same awards for this same lead service line mandate. The next step in the process, once we have a list of potential homes that could have lead lines, then we are supposed to go out and do actual onsite investigation, to determine if they do have lead lines. That's the next requirement from the program, and I think the next pot of money that we've been able to secure is five hundred thousand dollars to help us do that. Right now, once it's determined that a homeowner has lead lines on their side, there is no mandate for it to be replaced. It'll be on them, they'll have the knowledge of what's in their home, and they'll, right now, it'll be up to them to decide what to do. There's been, not to beat a dead horse here, but there's been some confusion, because some of the letters that had to go out, you all may have gotten calls about it, we've gotten calls here, that we've sent letters out telling people they have lead lines. We sent letters out asking them if they know if they have them, because that's what we're required to do, is try to get a list of anybody that could potentially have it. So, if you know for sure, I replaced all my lines in there, plastic, then you don't have lead lines anymore, but if you don't know, you go on that list. So, it's been, it's been kinda confusing, and it's, you know, not, it's not often that we work on the other side of the meter, but that's where we are on this, this project. Again, okay.
All right, you might as well stay there. Consideration of U.S. Department of Justice grant for nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and a budget ordinance amendment for the Motorola Public Safety Radio Project. Closure five, Chris Phillips.
Sir, I don't wanna call this a mandate like the last topic, but in some ways it was. We were very fortunate, several years ago, I think close to fifteen years ago, and a couple of our council members, our public safety group, we were able to go on to the state's Viper radio system, which created an ability for regional police to communicate with other departments, say highway control, sheriff's department, and a lot of times in situations where you need to have that ability to communicate easily, so using the same radio, using that becomes a tool that can really improve a situation that could go bad quickly. So, we've been on it for about fifteen years, and it's been great to be on it. The problem is, when the state tells you they're gonna upgrade the system, and you have to change all your radios, you really don't have much choice but to change all your radios. So, everybody in North Carolina was faced with this similar problem, everybody's on the Viper system, which is the majority of public safety units across North Carolina. So, Motorola is on the state contract as a vendor, we were, Police Chief Gibson and Fire Chief Farmer were in contact with Motorola early on, make sure regional's on the list. There was a time crunch, and we wanted to be able to have our radios by July 1st of 2025, which is the date, and so we worked with Motorola to get on their list. At the same time, we saw that there was an opportunity for potential funding from the federal level, Representative Kathy Manning's office had reached out with the chance for her office to sponsor some different funding opportunities, one being public safety, and our request was forwarded by them to the Department of Justice for consideration, and fortunately, we were awarded nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for this public safety radio project. The total cost is a million two twenty-one, so we're getting, you know, about three-fourths of it paid through the grant, and we will use general fund balance reserves to pay for the remaining portion. Again, the radios were from Motorola through state contract, so we didn't have to bid it out, and we aren't really asking for you guys to approve the contract, that's not required, because it was state contract, but once you approve the funding, then you're, you know, as in our approval, the contract as well. So, what's required tonight, there again is a resolution to accept the funding. This is a little different, because again, it's federal funding, so in addition to the resolution, in a format similar to what we normally see for you all, there's a page, several pages attached, so there are an additional, this is the last page here, there's an additional forty items of conditions of federal work resulted, that we are also supposed to comply with. Of course, most of them are things that we don't really comply with, to begin with, if they are specific in adding forty additional items, and the resolution you're asked to consider, states that we will be offering items. So, the first thing, again, it's a resolution to accept the Ops Grant Funds total nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and if that's approved, there's a budget ordinance amendment to recognize the nine hundred and sixty-three, and if you recognize fund balance, there's a typo in your packet, it says three sixty-eight, it's only two sixty-eight, so that would just saved you a hundred thousand dollars right there. It should have been two sixty-eight, I got a little fat fingered on typing it, but a total of a million two twenty-one, one hundred for the radios. And they will be here and ready to go, well in advance of the July 1st required date, they're already basically in-house with the radios. So, first thing is to consider the resolution to accept the grant.
We certainly do appreciate that savings of one hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, yes, we do, yes, we do.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the resolution, in the forty items?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we do accept the nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Shouldn't be any discussion about nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Now, we need a motion for budget ordinance ten.
Make a motion to approve the budget ordinance amendment number ten.
Okay, got a motion? And we have a second? Any discussion? None? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Budgetary item, consideration of fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget calendar and work sessions. Closure six. Manager Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, it is that time of year again, to look at our fiscal year 25, 2026 budget, and what we have outlined for you is the adoption of the budget calendar and work sessions. I just wanna briefly go over that, and make sure everyone's comfortable with those dates. So, tonight, February the 11th, present budget calendar to City Council, February 20th, City Council Annual Retreat, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and then February 21st, City Council Annual Retreat, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. On March the 3rd, budget detail will be presented to management team and department supervisors, and then on March 24th, Finance Department will complete our initial internal revenue projections. And then on April the 4th, all budgets should be submitted to the city manager's office by 5:00 p.m., and then April 7th through the 18th, budget review meetings with management team and department heads. And then we propose on April 22nd, a budget work session with City Council at 5:30 p.m. And then April 23rd through May 13th, will be the preparation of the proposed fiscal year 25, 26 budget, and then May 13th, we would present the proposed budget to City Council. We would suggest, if needed, a May 20th additional budget work session at 5:30 p.m., if council desires, and then June 10th, 2025, would be the public hearing and proposed adoption of the budget. So, we're just looking for a motion tonight, if you agree with that proposed schedule, looking for a motion to approve as presented.
Motion. Second? Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item is public comments. Do we have anyone who'd like to come before council tonight? Speak. Seeing none, board and commission appointments, enclosure seven. In closure eight.
Mayor and Council, thank you so much. Just a couple of items I'd like to opportunity to go over. So, as we stated earlier, just reminder for our annual city council retreat, from 8:30 to 12:30, we will have breakfast from 8:00 to 8:30. Also, the North Carolina League of Municipalities Town and State Dinner will be held on Tuesday, February 25th, at the Marriott in downtown Raleigh. And then just a reminder as well, the North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference is April 29th through May the 1st, and will be in Greenville, North Carolina. Do you wanna talk very briefly, a couple updates? We've got some great updates going at Lake Reesville. City crews are working on campground improvements at Lake Reesville. Purchase orders were issued for the location of all utilities, concrete, new fire sets, new waterproof garbage cans, and special equipment for tree and stump removals. Crews began working in limited areas in December, as the campground started to empty out. A significant number of trees and stumps have been removed, utility locates have occurred, and the sewer line installation is underway. However, of course, due to the weather and numerous water breaks that our Public Works Department has had to take care of, the project is behind schedule about two weeks. The campground is due to be back online on March 14th, and asphalt roads currently are planned to be installed April 7th through the 11th, so schedule is still weather dependent, but didn't wanna provide an update to the public there. Also, we will have our next Lunch and Learn, which will be Thursday, February 27th, at noon at the Carriage House, and the topic will be retirement planning and benefits. And then to conclude my report, I would like the opportunity for Officer Tommy Boone to please come forward. I got you right on the spot when you weren't expecting it. I got you right on the spot when you weren't expecting it. If I could get him to come forward. There's a resolution for council to approve. It's included to recognize the retirement of our beloved police K-9 Jessica. K-9 Jessica faithfully served this community from September 2020 until her retirement on January 22nd, 2025. And Officer Boone, who is K-9 Jessica's handler and partner, has agreed to purchase her from the city. And I can say, based on my experience and the honor I had to be able to do a ride along with you, you and your team and all that our police department do really opened my eyes. The proactive policing that I saw riding with you today, and then the love and dedication I got to see between Harley and Jessica really warmed my heart. So I can't think of a better home she gets to go with, with her partner. So I just want to tell you thank you, and thank you for agreeing to take her.
Thank y'all.
Got you on the spot, thank you.
You sure did.
Y'all can get our next ride along.
Hey, I got it marked down.
Okay. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second. All right, those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Okay, council members' reports. Councilmember Martin?
I'll forego mine as we move on to the session.
Councilmember Dejeanette?
Good afternoon. I have nothing to report at this time.
Councilmember Coats?
I'll have a report from the month of January later.
Councilmember Hurst?
I attended some of the Martin Luther King Junior celebrations, and that's my report. I think I'll share with you the luncheon that we had with the chamber. I thought it was an amazing event. I am so thankful that we have a chamber and team members on that chamber that are conscious of the needs and desires of the citizens of Reevesville, and they're doing a fantastic job in taking care of Reevesville. And Diane, after I finish my report, you come up and give yours. I'd also like to mention that at the last Battle of the Cup, I do believe City Hall has the cup. So I've got a long list of stuff here, but I'm going to forego mine too, so that we can get back to closed session. Diane?
Well, it's spiffy since you all were so.
Saving the best for last.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank y'all. They say the real superheroes wear capes, but I didn't see your cape, Mr. Mayor, so I'm kind of concerned about that. But we did have a great time. I thank you all for coming and supporting. It was great. We missed you all that could not come, but I know you were off doing other important things. We have several events coming up. The March Cash Mob, I'm so excited. We were at Mishmash this past week, and so for those of you that came out, we had a great time, and I think she was tickled. So Cash Mob, the idea is to infuse money into a small business just at a quick hit. So it's a lot of fun, you bring out a $20 bill. So next one is March the 7th at 12 p.m., and you might need to plan to be there for the hour, we'll just leave it at that, and you might not need to eat lunch before you come. So the next event we have is ribbon cutting at Midtown Salon and Spa. As you know, they came before you with their, their, I can't even think of the word, I just lost it and it went right out, but they moved locations, and so we have their ribbon cutting coming up, and that is on April the 2nd at 12 p.m. Uh-huh. Yes, sir. Well, yes, Gardner, and yes. And so they are celebrating 21 years on April the 3rd, I believe it is. It's either the day before or the day after, so we're going to be cutting their ribbon and celebrating with them. And then there's a very exciting countywide coffee and connections at the Economic Development Center for Level Up Rocco, which is the Golden Leaf Project for the CTE High School that is coming, and that is a major undertaking, and I understand most folks are doing a really great job and trying to get the word out about that, so I'm excited to have the. It is April the 8th, I'm sorry, at 8 a.m. That is a typo. That's a Tuesday, right? Yep, April 8th, I'm calling that out for my, let me just make sure so I don't, yep, April the 8th at 8 a.m. And that is so we can have the businesses and elected officials all together in the room and hear more about that. And I understand that they're going to start out at Rockingham High School, and then they will move to the campus of RCC. Four new members, Bobby Machine, Direct Auto Insurance, TJ and Moore Farm, which is also a partner to Midtown, and then Primaria is also our newest member. So Coffee and Connections for March will be at Ritz or Ortho on Front Street, and we're still mentioning the Kiwanis Club and their Pancake Supper coming up. We don't want to miss that. Also, there are a couple other countywide events coming, but those are later on, so I'll bring those back to you. That's about all right now, other than updates on the directory we hope to have completed in the next couple of weeks, and then it'll go to print, and so we'll be sure to have a copy of that in your hands very soon. Any questions?
Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank y'all.
Mayor and Council, before we go into closed session, since I put Officer Boone on the spot and I didn't time it correctly, I believe his special guest is here just to say thank you.
Oh, yeah. Come on in and show off a little bit.
Show off for your daddy.
Thank you for your service.
Manager, he still has a bite sleeve if you want to put it on.
She got to say it. Six.
Six.
Young retired.
Yeah, I was about to say the same thing.
Yeah.
Thank you. She does. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we'll be moving to the first floor. Did I miss something? Oh, yeah, appointments.
Okay, for the Main Street Advisory Board, the Ritzville Downtown Corporation had endorsed two candidates of those, Ashley Furr received four votes, Cindy Scarborough received two votes, so she was not having trouble.
All right, now we'll move to the first floor conference room for a closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege for real estate pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1183 and 5. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand.